Government in the city of Wood Creek. For each of the people that are here, for each of the people that can't be here, they're either online or they'll see it later. Father, we just thank you for each of these individuals. Father. To deal with each other and to achieve compromise consensus. We have the wisdom of Solomon that we can do what's best for the city of Wood Creek as we go forward. Father, we thank you for these things. In your name we pray.
And Councilmember Rasko, would you lead us in the pledge?
Did it again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its stand is, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, the Texas one nation under God, fine and indivisible.
City Secretary, will you please call the road? Mayor Dorf.
Here.
Mayor Protim LeBron.
Here.
Councilmember Giddy Brizan.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Brent Foley.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Rasko.
Here.
We have a forum. We will proceed to public comments. I have signed up at the start of the meeting. Justin, are you here, Justin? Yes. John?
Yeah.
If you would like to come up, I'm sorry. I thought that said Justin on here. I was like, I don't see Justin.
I'm John O'Dowd, I'm with 20th and 25th Circle. And I want to make everybody aware of something very special happening Monday morning at eight forty to eight fifty. I am a co-host of the morning show on KTVH, from Blue Dollar Credit, on nine four point three, on Red and Dial, or KTVH dot org. And for the past five or six weeks, since I do live in Wood Creek, we've been having everything Wood Creek from eight forty to eight fifty. And our city manager, Brent Lewis, has come in and joined us via Zoom. And we have great conversations back and forth. He keeps everybody informed regarding council meetings and road repairs or emergency management or whatever. It's purely been done because we're trying to put a conversation show standing here just beyond what it seems to remember looking at the battle. We had a conversation this last week with people in Wood Creek who might not even know that they live in Wood Creek. You know, because we've got a little bit of vacuum there. So I just really wanted to take a few minutes and make you all aware that everything we're getting for him zooms in with us. Each and every one of you are invited to join us. And mayor, if you would like to, we would love to have you and bring it on in as well. So don't tune in, it wasn't the only thing I have to say. If there are certain topics that you want to make a brand, you should try to brand them and need to do that.
Excellent. We do appreciate it. And I know we have talked, Brenton and I, about contacting the council members and setting a schedule where each of them can also participate in areas that they're working and looking forward to it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to excuse myself and go take a shower. So I'll see you all.
And you will be, and you will be John from now on. Thank you. I have wishing to speak at the start of the meeting. Deborah Hines, would you like to come now or do you want to wait? Okay. Well, that's great. And we're enjoying having them.
Makes one of us. All right. Is it okay if we remove our masks?
Yes. As long, in fact, anyone can remove a mask if they can safely distance six feet.
Hello, all. I am Deborah Hines, a member of the Citizens Comprehensive Planning Committee. I am here to offer an alternative perspective and clarification on statements made by council during the discussion on March third regarding the survey created by the Citizens Comprehensive Planning Committee, or CCPC for short, and Pegasus. The CCPC and Pegasus did look at surveys from other cities. I personally submitted questions from the BUTA 2020 survey for consideration. We did review previous city of Wood Creek surveys. These were part of the initial information packet we received from Pegasus. We incorporated professional guidance from a professor at Texas State. That input was generously gathered by a citizen and submitted to the committee. In fact, I would like to take a moment to thank all the citizens who have stepped forward to offer input for the survey. That flow of communication was very much appreciated. The second draft of the CCPC survey is a direct reflection of that widespread collaborative effort. It should be noted that the CCPC has met just three times total. Only two of those times with less than four hours altogether involved reviewing and editing the survey. We had barely created a second draft. It was far from finalized or a finished product. At one point, it was mentioned that code zoning or city ordinance potentially have no place on a comprehensive planning survey. As evidence to the contrary, I've provided a copy of the BUTA 2020 Comprehensive Planning Survey by Texas State to council today. Here are three examples of code zoning and specific ordinance being addressed. Page twelve, zoning and mixed use development. Page twenty-five, building height. Page twenty-six, regulating light to preserve dark skies. The comprehensive planning process is purposely set up to be a citizen-directed and community-driven effort, implying that Pegasus should have been controlling the CCPC in any significant way doesn't seem to align with the guidelines as outlined on the city website and presented to the CCPC in our introductory meeting. Those same guidelines state explicitly that the CCPC is to serve as ambassadors for the community and that we were to provide residents with the most public possible engagement. I maintain that the use of social media to drive interest and participation falls under this umbrella. City staff removed three questions from the first draft of the survey without CCPC approval, and this occurred outside of a public meeting. I worry this was a violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act. At the very least, it felt like a clear overreach by the staff into CCPC responsibilities. Any and all changes should have been made in a public meeting, and while contributions from the city staff are important, ultimately, the power to make survey changes rested with the CCPC alone as outlined in our agenda packets under attendance by other elected or appointed officials. The CCPC, with guidance from Pegasus and city staff, reinstated those questions with edits to the wording on the second draft of the survey. Immediately after that, the city informally fired Pegasus on February tenth, 2021, to quote the resignation letter from our former CCPC chair, Amanda Irwin, who listed a lack of communication and waste of volunteers' time in her reasoning for leaving the committee at this juncture. If I'm being honest, I am also disappointed and discouraged by the way my committee and Pegasus have been treated. I personally still feel like the termination of Pegasus was premature and lacks sufficient grounds to justify such extreme action. I hope we can all learn from this experience together and do better when we resume our work on the eighteenth. It's important for us to remember that the future of the city of Wood Creek as a whole is far more important and much bigger than any other committee, board, city staff, mayor, or current city council members, and perhaps most importantly, even our personal and individual agendas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Raydon, do you want to speak at this time? You want to wait till item four? Okay. Chris Grummer? Thank you. Thank you. There are no other public comments at this time. We will be calling public comments at the agenda item four and five when we get to those agenda items. So we'll go to our consent agenda. Have a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented in court.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Councilmember Rasko, second. Have a roll call vote.
Mayor Protim LeBron.
Aye.
Councilmember Brizan.
Aye.
Councilmember Rasko.
Aye.
Councilmember Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Henry.
Aye.
We have an unanimous approval. We'll move to the regular agenda. Item four. And I have public comments on item four. Would you like to speak at this time? Raydon Tully.
Thank you. With great advice, all you have to say is yes. Now that we have seen the pavement advice from Ryan Bell and Adrian Freas, I'm ever grateful you chose Joe Cantalupo's team to be our city engineer. K-Freeze and Associates fourteen projects fit Wood Creek's current needs. Cut through traffic remains a problem, but that's political, not a paving decision. Although the increased use of our roads by non-residents shortens their lifespan. Setting that aside, the engineer's sober realism will protect our narrow rural paths, our only traffic calming devices. I commend these quiet lanes and signature trees as highly prized and worth preserving and increasing. I too once thought about ribbon curbs, but Ryan's comments last week made clear any concrete is unwise. Asphalt edges are more appropriate, less costly, and perfect for passing, even with edge breaks over time. Strips of concrete create new cost, additional maintenance, and danger to cars and pedestrians at the drop-off where natural shoulders wash away. The gentle asphalt edge transition is a benefit and better than concrete. Asphalt overlay also enhances our friendly community image. For the second agenda item, or agenda item five, I last spoke about this well-chosen, hard-working conscientious group a month ago today, the day their voices were cut short by this council. As I said then, they give me great hope. This committee of nine, six citizens, and three business representatives chaired admirably by Amanda Irwin. Most are in their first public role for the city of Wood Creek. They reflect the increasing youth of the city, the several hundred children and families, the high education and diverse backgrounds. They deserve room for acclamation as welcome new voices. Gathering them in was the right decision. Say yes to keeping them in place. I greatly appreciate their diligence and offer my deepest gratitude for the infusion of leadership they represent. Their outspokenness and their reserve by turns show honest exploration of public service. They should speak their minds, and we should listen and engage. Where is the harm in genuine public discourse? We impoverish ourselves and our city when we shy away from difficult questions and challenging perspectives from emerging leaders. They see and they are the future of Wood Creek. They inspire us forward. Our Citizens Comprehensive Plan Committee. Our citizens comprehensive plan. Our citizens. Our.
Mayor, may I make a correction on a fact?
Yes. I recognize Councilmember Brizan.
Thank you.
For factual comment.
Mr. Tully suggested that there's several hundred children in the city, and by the last poll we got from the school district, there were only one hundred ninety-nine.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasko. Those are registered children in WISD. It does not count private schools or anything else. Mr. Tully said several hundred children and families, and I think it's correct.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So I did want to read the agenda item for discussion and take appropriate action on pavement management program and possible funding options. I did not read that before councilman, or excuse me, before Raydon Tully spoke. I have Jack Boz, who is asked to speak on agenda item four.
I'm Jack Boz, two zero country lane. I'm not speaking as a P&amp;Z commissioner, but as a road scholar, I'm a part of the Roads Committee. I hate following Raydon. He's such a damn elegant speaker, so I've got a disadvantage here. We've had four previous engineering studies over the last fifteen years, and finally we've got one that I think we really can move off on. Several things that impressed me. Number one, they verified we've got a sound, good road base, which means we don't have to rip up and redo road bases. That's significant because that's a major cost in resurfacing a street. We've got a few areas that will have, that'll occur, but for the most part, we can move forward and just lay this two-inch asphalt. The other thing is they recommend asphalt, period. No chip and seal. Chip and seal, seven years. Asphalt's twenty. I think it's a good way to go. A little bit more expensive, but in the long haul, that's a better way to go. The only issue I have, and I've spoken with Ryan, the only issue I have is how they recommend repairing the streets. They have what I call a skipping about. You repair one part of a street and it goes skipping over and do another one. And then you can come back to the same street that you already repaired and repair portions of again. I understand why they did that. It's a sound approach from their perspective, but I don't think it's cost-effective to do it that way in the long term. Secondly, I think it'd be a nightmare with our citizens' communication because, you know, we only have, what, a third of the people have signed up for the website. There'll be more. But trying to get the city citizens to know where a street has been skipped over here and there, one-way closed, and how long it's going to be, I just think it'd be a communication nightmare. With that in mind, if you look at the, and y'all probably got it, their proposal starting with Wood Creek Drive. If you notice on Wood Creek Drive, it's mostly red. A good portion is red. Red means you got to do it now or you should do it now. Pink means it's going to eventually come bite you in the, I mean, not bite you, but anyway, you know what I mean? Eventually, you got to repair it. So with that in mind, I would recommend, and I hope Councilmember Foley doesn't fall over his chair, but I would recommend you start on one end of Wood Creek Drive and just roll that motor all the way down to the other end and pave it. Now, the western end part of it's going to have to be dug up a little bit. You can't just lay two inches there because it's depression, so you're going to have to rebuild that part. But doing one street like that at a time, it does two, it does two things. I think it's cost-effective. You don't stop and move the machinery somewhere else. You just keep paving all the way down that road until it's complete, complete. I think that's appropriate. From a image standpoint, when we moved up here some years ago, we had a lot of visitors coming up here, going to see the whole country. And every time I asked them, what was your impression when you first drove into Wood Creek? Half of them, half of them. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, encourage them one way. Half of them would say the image they got of this city was when they drove down portions of Wood Creek Drive, and that set an image of a rundown city. Of course, as they got to know the city, they say, well, that was a bad perception. But the condition of that street when you drive it in this community sets an image. So I propose you just, just go down Wood Creek Drive. I think there's some costs that we got from current some years ago. That's three or four years ago. I want to do, how much it was going to cost to do it. I'll let Brent get into that because that'd have to be updated. But what's left over, we can regroup back with the city engineer and determine what another street needs to be repaired. But I don't think hopping around is a way to repair these streets. The other thing is, when you do that, if you repair a part of a street, go do another street, and you come back, you can't match the colors. Well, strategically, I mean, structurally, it doesn't matter. But from an appearance standpoint, it looks like a quilt, a different color quilt. And that just image, I know, but anyway, you can avoid that by just going from one end to the other end. And concrete ribbon curbing, I've talked to Stan, it's not Stan, I've got a short term name. Ryan, hell, I should have written it down. Being Ryan, sorry about that, Ryan. I've talked to him. Six inches is, I think Councilmember Foley brought up before, six inches with a heavy dual-wheeled track truck will crack that six inches. So the minimum is either ten or twelve. But the problem is you got to dig down a couple of inches, two or three, four inches, depending on the depth of concrete. And if any of y'all have gone through what we did on Wood Creek Drive, you sure as hell don't want to do this again because the utility lines there are almost surfaced. So we end up cutting the utility lines, and that'll delay the project because you tell the company don't want to cooperate. I'm for not doing ribbon curbing at all. All you got to do is go to Mountain Crest. They did their streets a few years ago. It's all in asphalt, no ribbon curbing. And that'll give you a good idea of what it looks like. I came from the community down to Kima. Twenty years ago, they'd laid two-inch asphalt. It's still there today. No ribbon curbing. It looks fine. So that's, I would certainly go along with that idea. Now, talking about calming devices, that's going to be another issue, but we did have a preliminary drawing that showed a permanent mounted, excuse me, calming device just in front of our Councilmember Foley's house. And, but there was a footnote on the thing that says honky horn before proceeding. Only thing, you know, I'm getting up in age, like a lot of us are getting up in age. I sure hope we start some paving operation before they play taps in my grave site. That's all I got.
Jack?
Thank you, Jack.
I'm not going to tell Councilmember Foley you came in here early and unscrewed the bottom side of his chair to help him fall out of it.
I think I have to call a point of order on that. Thank you, Jack. We appreciate it. Well, we have no other public comment on this item, so I would entertain that we begin a discussion and do we have a motion to begin discussions?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we accept K-Freeze's pavement assessment report and proceed with their recommendation to begin and complete Wood Creek Drive with the caveat that we phase the work, starting with the four ninety-nine, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, that was previously allocated.
Wait a second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brizan and second by Mayor Protim LeBron. Is there a discussion?
I just, I just didn't hear you very well. Councilmember, the last part about beginning with what now?
Beginning and completing Wood Creek Drive with the caveat that we phased the work starting with the four hundred ninety-nine thousand that was previously allocated by another council.
And I will add, well, I just wanted to add to this point that we do not have the possible funding options to discuss today. Manager Lewis did not receive in time for today's meeting options to discuss, but if this motion is in place, we don't need to go forward to discuss the options today. Is that in agreement with everybody?
For funding.
Okay. So discussion on the motion. Councilmember Foley.
Did you say we're not going to decide funding options today? We're just going to accept the report and then, then what are we going to do?
We're going to accept the motion.
Yes.
To begin and use the already allocated four hundred and ninety-nine thousand to proceed.
Right.
And if Councilman, if Manager Lewis needs to clarify.
Basically, the council did allocate the four hundred fifty thousand dollars previously for Rhodes Project. There's another fifty thousand that has been earmarked in the budget. So basically, we have almost a half million dollars to be allocated. We, that does also include the engineering costs, so that'll have to be deducted from that. But the way I understand the motion is go ahead, proceed with Wood Creek Drive and use the money that has already been allocated. The funding options were to see if council wanted to go further with any other projects, but I did not receive that at this time.
To clarify my motion, that's why I said we phase it, so that this would be phase one, and then we come back to council for future funding to proceed beyond that.
Don't we have enough funding for Wood Creek Drive? I mean, half million, what is there?
Well, it depends on the specifications because I think the mixed action after the discussion would be what I would recommend. If council decides to do Wood Creek Drive only, they direct staff to work with the engineers to develop a base bid and a couple of alternates to find out what we can do for that money that's been allocated, so.
Then they would have to put it out for bid, I mean, to the county and to private contractors, or how does that work from here?
Basically, I got the engineers here, but I'll answer that. Because the county is so small for their projects that, as you know, we did not have that six hundred and sixty feet, I believe it was, on Wood Creek Drive repaired by the county because they could never get to it. So the next would be to work with our engineers to go out for bids, public bids, and have a private company come in to perform the work.
Last question. When is the time that we can start talking about traffic calming options or strategies? I think folks on Wood Creek Drive are going to be really interested in that. So when does that come up? When you do the bids? Is that something you're going to go ahead and do? Or do we, you need to come back to council and ask for input on that? Or, I just don't want to see, we get this paved and, you know, now it looks great, people go really fast. I just am concerned about, are we going to build in traffic calming strategies? And you're telling me that that's part of your process or?
You want to come up to the podium? And basically, the, our engineering firm is looking at the data from our radar signs at this time, and that will have some impact on what should be done on Wood Creek Drive.
Well, I just caution about that data. I'm not sure how good the data is. So, I mean, I want to look at what data they're going to rely on before we decide, you know, what we're going to do. Like I say, that's a big priority for folks that live on Wood Creek Drive. So we want to make sure we got good information, you know, when we make our decisions.
Do we have a motion? Do we have any other discussion?
I have just a question.
Councilmember Rasko.
Thank you. You know, just sort of going down the priority projects, the two items that list Wood Creek totaled just under sixty thousand dollars in your estimates. And then, of course, we'd added twenty-five percent contingency. And as Jack said, there's some areas that might have to do some extra work, and not every, every section of Wood Creek is included in those priority projects. But, I mean, is it fair to say that we, you know, could get Wood Creek done and still have like half the money or more left over?
I would say that's, that's a reasonable assumption at this time. When we, we get in to do the final engineering, we'll also need to look at things like drainage. Sorry, you don't want to cause any new problems with drainage?
It's okay at his house, but everywhere else.
You brought in Councilmember Foley now.
We'll put in a little rain garden there.
Well, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be my recommendation, but.
But it's fair to say that we could, we could, as, as Mr. Boz suggests, that we could do the entire stretch of Wood Creek that needs doing and still have money left over to look at some of the other priorities.
That does seem feasible.
Okay, thank you.
I call the question.
Any other? We'll call a question. We'll call a question, City Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Judy Brizendon.
Aye.
Councilmember Brett Pulli.
I'm gonna abstain until I know more about the traffic calming, but overall, I like it, but I'm still gonna abstain until I know more.
Mayor Pro Tim LeBrun.
Aye.
Councilmember Jeff Rasko.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Andrews.
Aye.
Motion carries, four ayes, one extension. We'll move to item number five, and thank you very much, we appreciate your help. Thank you.
I do wanna, I wanna thank the engineer, we did something like this, Jack, but now we know how to do it right. Very good job, thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. So on the regular agenda, item five, discussion and take appropriate action on the City of Wood Creek Comprehensive Plan Project and the Citizen Comprehensive Plan Committee. And I'm just going to make a couple of comments, and then we will open for a motion and for discussion. We, as a city and a council, are committed to continuing the work of the city planning, and by making some adjustments to the comprehensive plan project, the plan is needed by the city for a blueprint for our future, for grant filings, and for providing continuity and leadership direction. It's an extremely important project, and we are committed to continuing that project. Our tax dollars were spent, and we do feel that we did indeed end with a work product that will enable us to go forward without further delays. The leadership of the project and the citizen committee structure and the issues of getting these things done in a timely manner just need to be addressed. So I have a recommendation that we're preaching out to and hearing from numbers of citizens, having not spoken with individuals on the committee or the council, of course, but I do have a recommendation to make to council, and that is for needed adjustments. And I think a needed adjustment is that we need, of course, to appoint a lead for the project to go forward. And in that regard, I would like to recommend that we appoint Mayor Pro Tim LeBrun to go forward and to lead this project in, as we go forward and continue to work on the comprehensive plan. I do also suggest that we have Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim LeBrun work on foundational guidelines for the project, and to be able to begin anew with those foundational documents. The second aspect of the adjustment that I'm recommending is that we adjust the structure of the existing Citizen Comprehensive Plan Committee. We adjust the committee to act as an advisory work group under the direction of a project leader. This work group format has been very successfully used as a model for previous plans that were excellently completed by our city committees, or as a work group, not an official committee. That organization will help, we think, or I think, it will help adjusting as a best practice to go forward, to salvage all of the best work of all of those who participated in the plan development to date. The committee worked well, we want them to continue in a work group, and we are optimistic that the city will benefit from the work done, and will be promptly back on the timeline for an excellent comprehensive plan for the city. So with those ideas and recommendations, I would entertain a motion in order to begin discussion on the matter.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Aurora LeBrun as the Comprehensive Plan Project Director at this time.
I second that motion.
And as to the second guideline, do I have a motion, or is that included in your motion?
Actually, just to further verify that, that she has the opportunity to readjust the structure of the existing Citizens Committee via Citizens Work Group under direction and the lead of Aurora LeBrun.
So do I have a second?
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hamburg, and the second by Councilmember Judy Brizendon. Now we'll open for discussion.
Got a couple of questions.
Councilmember Rasko.
So, so what we're saying is that we've got enough information that we got from Pegasus and the committee working together to complete the comprehensive plan, all the survey and everything else that goes with it, without having a consultant onboard to assist, that there's enough to work with, and you feel very comfortable with that.
Actually, I wasn't saying that we had enough work product to proceed to all of the phases of a comprehensive plan, there were several aspects of that. Would you like to comment on that?
Yeah.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim LeBrun.
Well, can I just make a quick point of order, I mean, should she be voting on this and weighing in on this, I mean, would that be a conflict of interest if she's gonna be appointed, and why should she recuse herself?
We're discussing.
Well, I mean, when you accuse, you don't participate, period. Am I right or not, bud?
Continue to make comments about the motion.
One of the things that I have been reviewing, I have reviewed the documented draft, I believe it was the second draft of the survey that had been prepared by the committee with the leadership or with the participation of Pegasus. There is, there are some areas that need some improvement, some work, it's not a decision that I'm going to make. If we move forward with this, the first step would be to bring the members of the committee together on the already scheduled date, which is next week, if I'm not mistaken, on the 18th, on the 18th, and go through and bring everybody together, and of course, it will be open, it will be a public meeting, citizens can attend, go through a review, and also set up a foundation to the work that we're going to do. When I speak about a foundation, this comes from my past history working with advisory work groups, here with the city, with the school board, and also with the state. And one thing that is good, if you start your process with a very clear understanding of what is our purpose, what we're here for, how we are going to achieve the purpose, and then the rules of the, and then the rules for us to work together and come to a product. It is not reinventing the wheel, the wheel is there. It is looking at some of things that we could do better, and that's basically what I have, I am willing to do. It is not an issue of, I don't have a conflict of interest, I have expressed my opinion of the work done in the past, I feel that is a valid assessment of the work as, and I am entertaining suggestions, comments from the members of the committee, but our goal is to move forward with the survey, have a survey that has great participation, and is not biased or otherwise influenced by anyone in particular. This is my goal.
I'm just trying to answer just a little question from Councilwoman Rasko. So it entirely would be, I would think, up to the work group to make decisions as to the status of the different parts of the project, and it may very well be that they will need to come back to council to discuss a professional that would help through the areas that they may not feel they have full expertise. So no, I don't think that we would only have this committee, we may need to have a professional if we in fact move to that level. If that helps, yes.
And the other question I had, sort of, is around semantics, I mean, both of you have actually called this thing, you want to call it a work group, you keep calling it a committee, I mean, I'd like to know how you differentiate a work group from a committee, I'm just afraid that for the people that have been serving on the committee, that they're sort of being downgraded, and it's kind of a slap on the face, and a committee, I mean, it's just, we still have a group of people working together toward a common goal, and whether you call it a committee or a work group, you know, it's like, why change the name of the group to achieve the same goal?
Well, I will ask our council to direct the issues, the differences between an advisory work group and a council committee.
So a couple of things, to address Councilmember Pulli's previous point, under Texas law, conflict of interest exists if someone has a financial interest in something, i.e. a business interest or a real property interest. To the best of my understanding, Councilmember LeBrun, or Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim LeBrun, does not have such an interest in this position or this committee. However, Councilmember Pulli is also a lawyer who is well-versed in the Open Meetings Act, and if he does know of a specific conflict of interest, I would certainly ask him to share it at this point.
I would just say, it just doesn't seemly for someone to basically vote to elevate themselves into this position, I mean, if it were me, I would recuse, just as a matter of doing the right thing. In terms of researching that, I can look at it later, but I don't know if she actually has any money in the deal at this point, but it just seems unseemly to be voting on your own advancement.
I appreciate that, and I'll note that the objection is on the basis of unseemliness. The other, the other point that I would make is that any city council in the state of Texas reserves the right to create by motion, by resolution, or by ordinance, any number of committees or subcommittees to report to and serve at the will of the council. And those committees may be given such duties and authority as the council deems fit, however, a council may not divest itself of its ultimate decision-making authority. The best way to explain it would be, the buck stops here, at this table, and the council cannot make the buck stop somewhere else. Now, my understanding of the initial committee that was appointed, the group of individuals that were appointed to effectively operate in an advisory capacity, to come together to assist in gathering information and report back to the council and the staff, and operate in accordance with the city's present code of ordinances, i.e. the council, by virtue of Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, has created a structure where the city manager handles the city's business, reports back to the council, council operates from there. I don't think there's any grand shift in what's been proposed between the committee when it was initially formed, or what's being presented right now. And the old saying, is a horse a different name, I'm gonna screw it up and sound like George W. Bush trying to get it right, but the point, but the, but the point is, we can call it any number of things, but it still is what it is, which is a group of citizens coming together and providing input, and that are in some slightly more official way part of the process, and the council is designating Mayor Pro Tim LeBrun, Mayor Pro Tim LeBrun, to assist in that. That's it. I don't think it's a downgrade.
So since the chair of the committee resigned, that leadership position is open, so why wouldn't we just ask Mayor Pro Tim LeBrun to join that team as project director and just continue the work of the committee?
Councilmember, I don't know if, if this council, and someone can correct me, but I don't know if this council ever asked, she's a friend of mine, I don't know where I know.
Amanda.
Amanda Irwin. I don't know if this council appointed Amanda as, I think that was just some internal decision of this committee that ultimately did not flow from some authority vested by this council. Now, I could have missed something, but ultimately, my recollection is this council did one thing, it voted to create an advisory committee that was called the City of Wood Creek Comprehensive Plan Committee. I think that's what happened. And so ultimately, any decision that the committee decided to make to create some internal hierarchy, that was their decision, but it wasn't based on what this council did. And ultimately, if this council wants to come back and say, you know what, on some date prior, we created a committee, and we think that it's in the best interest of our citizens to maybe add some structure, put some meat on the bone, this council always reserves the right to do.
Well, the reason that I brought the suggestion for a re-adjustment, not a reorganization, just a re, an adjustment to the entire process of how it will be led and how the committee will continue, would be fresh, and would continue, I don't see there's any step down in any way, but I will say that the organization and the work of a work group is very conducive to camaraderie among the committee members, to meet and to discuss under the leadership of the director of the group, that there is a less formal nature to a work group, very similar to how the city has in many times had a road advisory group that met, citizens are invited to attend those meetings, that is a much less formalized circumstance. And I believe that under what we've gone through, that these last weeks, that I think that the community needs to see a cohesive group, meeting with a proven leader, and we're saving quite a bit of money, the taxpayers' money, and we'll start where, if that is where Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim LeBrun chooses to start with her committee, I would think that the committee will then come together with a new focus and work together, and I'm looking forward to that. That was the reason for the adjustment of the actual structure of the committee, it does make a difference if it's a committee or if it's a work group, in perception, but also in actual procedures. There's a much less formalized situation, and we will have, I think, a really good committee without much outside influence on that committee.
If I may bring some little history into the, into the mix.
Can you speak up just a little?
Yeah, okay, if I may, in 2009, we formed a group to do the Vision 2020 Master Plan, which was equivalent to the comprehensive plan. I was a citizen in the work group that was led by the Mayor Pro Tim at the time. I was a citizen in the work group that was led by the Mayor Pro Tem at the time, and also the mayor at the time participated. In the, then we had the 2030 update, and at that time, Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Shiel were working with an advisory work group that included a number of citizens. One of them was Pat Rollins. And then when Councilmember Shiel became mayor, at the same time that I was elected to council, I became, well, I became one of the second councilmember advisor to the work group. Both of these groups produced satisfactory documents, including two surveys, and it was a very effective environment and a very effective work groups. I think that we presented, I'm sure Councilmember Brasko was on council at the time, I'm not sure about Councilmember Pulley, but we presented our work products to council, council reviewed, provided approval. The surveys had good responses and the document was produced. So this is going back, if anything, to a format that has been successful in the past.
Is there any other discussion, Councilmember Brasko?
I'm sorry, I'm just not through with this. I just, you know, you said yourself, okay, this makes it more informal. To make it a work group is more formal and you can sort of get together and have more camaraderie and things. She said that.
Yeah, she said.
Look at the tape. That's what she said. But, you know, a comprehensive plan is a formal document that we've been told many times that we, it's required. It's not, it's not sort of a, oh yeah, let's just put a plan together, you know, let's build a barn and have a dance. I mean, this is something that we need in order to do grants and everything, as you have said. So, so why, you may not, you may say, oh, it's not a downgrade. I think that if you talk to, you know, any of the committee members or any committee member of any group and say, okay, you're a, you're a committee reporting to the council and now we're going to call you a work group instead, they would probably go, oh, really? So, and if we don't have to do that, I mean, why go through the step?
Well, any comments?
Just, I was part of the ordinance review way back when, about last year. And all the things that you talked about as far as camaraderie, consensus, and all those things are things that we did because of it, of the structure that we had, it was very effective. We got some work done and then we were stopped by COVID last February, March, but until then, we were effective in getting some work done in that particular structure, which is pretty much like this one looks like. I think that if people understand that it's really, there's a certain amount of trust, and the trust is that each of these people that are going to be a part of this group are going to do everything they possibly can to make it the best that it can possibly be. So regardless if it were a media or work group, I think work group is just as good that, that it's proper to do so.
Mr. Pulley, have you seen that?
Well, I have a few questions. I mean, first of all, I regret that we've lost a consultant and it costs us 18 grand, and I regret that we've lost Amanda, who is a top-notch leader, top-notch attorney, and I hate to lose talent like that, but, you know, I guess we need to fill that, that position. And I'm curious, wouldn't, and I've got two questions, wouldn't the committee have the opportunity to pick their own chairman, like they did before? And secondly, I don't understand the structure. Now, this is going to be an advisory work group, but Aurora is in charge of it, so they can advise, are we only going to be getting Aurora's opinion on this, or how is that going to work structurally? Because it looks like they've been sort of demoted to mainly just giving advice and then Aurora's in charge of it and that's who we're going to hear from. And I don't like that structure. So those are my questions, and then I'll have more comment later. So go ahead.
I think in your making some assumptions, and I have one person in the audience who participated in an advisory work group that I led, how the advisory work group was conducted, I basically was a facilitator and I managed the group. We agreed on purpose, we agreed on objectives, but it was a very formal process where we went, we had agendas, we had objectives for the, in every agenda, we had goals, objectives to reach, we reviewed the work product, votes were taken. It was not like I made the decision or two people made the decision, votes were taking, were taken. And when a report was prepared, was reviewed by all of the members of the work group and comments were incorporated, and that's how we worked. We had a very, it was a work group. We did not have, I don't think we followed Robert's Rules of Order stood letter, but we had a process, an organized process where everybody was given equal opportunity to participate. And then the work product was a joint work product that all, we all agreed with. That's how we did it.
Can I ask you something real quick, a word to clarify that? Now, if this work group committee comes up to with a, an opinion or a decision that you disagree with, how is that going to be handled? Will you be the final decision-maker, or will the work group's opinion or decision be passed up to council for a decision?
Majority rules.
Okay.
We have votes, majority rules.
Even if you disagree?
You take a vote, majority rules.
All right.
If somebody doesn't, at the end of the decision, this is one of the rules that we follow, you may disagree, but once you reach an agreement, it's voted on, it is the decision of the committee and it's not to be, and those who are part of the committee or work group are to support it. Because we, everybody had equal opportunity and this was a majority rule.
So there will be votes taken then on, on decisions about how to go forward?
We did.
I'm sorry?
I don't know. Maybe I was blessed with my three, my three experiences, maybe I was blessed with good luck, but we had, we achieved what we got there to do. And yes, we disagreed, but we eventually came to a consensus. There's a difference between disagreement and there's a difference between agreement and consensus. We came to a consensus.
So you'll be taking votes from the committee? You'll be taking votes from the committee, is that right? And those will be passed to council? Are you going to take votes from the committee or the work group, and those will be passed to council?
P and Z.
P and Z?
Yes. P and Z is in charge of the planning.
Okay. So then you'll take a vote, and then that, that vote will be passed to P and Z, right?
Yes.
Whatever it is.
P and Z will review and P and Z will come back to council. Yes, and as council members, we will not participate in the committee, excuse me, the work group activity. We may attend, but not participate.
Councilmember Pulley, are you questioning Mayor Pro Tem's integrity and to act on behalf of that work group?
Just ask a simple question.
Councilmember Brasko.
So, just one thing, they don't, probably shut up. So my experience, you know, in this city is that, you know, if you want something done and done well and done quickly and efficiently, you put Aurora Lebrun in charge of it. That's, you know, that's worked really well for this city for a long time. She does a great job of that. In this case, if she were to step in to the existing committee and lead it like she has so many others, you know, we can get this thing moving forward and we don't have to go through all the rigmarole of saying, okay, we're going to call it this or call it that. She just steps in and takes over. There's a vacancy on the committee. When, when Pegasus came forward with the plan for this in the first place and said, well, you know, we want all new voices, we don't want anybody that has had city experience in the past, I have to say, I had my reservations about that, that I thought it would have been good to have some experience on the committee, you know, to take it forward. So this sort of solves that problem and allows us to move forward. So I could support something along those lines. I just have trouble with making a big deal out of restructuring and doing all this stuff when a committee has done really great work up to this point and just needs to get some, a new start and go forward. And I think Mayor Pro Tem Lebrun would do a good job.
I would just comment, because I made the recommendations to the council on this, that that's a very good point that you did make, that Pegasus made these particular suggestions of how we should structure our committee. And Pegasus literally was in charge of our committee. And Pegasus gave us the criteria for who would sit on our committee. So our citizens did get quite a bit of input, and our committee was diverse, inexperienced and experienced, and quite an interesting group of extremely well-chosen individuals. That they were the Pegasus committee. And I'm proposing, and have now put this on the table with council members, a motion and a second, that we need to adjust this project in such a way that we are going forward. We have a proven leader who has done this work before, who we're gifted to have, Mayor Pro Tem Lebrun, and she's willing to work on this. And I believe that the committee will not be demoted by being considered an advisory work group with very clear foundational statements and foundational direction on how to go forward. And that's the goal. Councilmember Hamburg.
Not to cut you off, Madam Mayor, I call for the question.
Yes. Councilmember Hamburg has called for a question. City Secretary has called for a roll, there being no further discussion, obviously. Please call for Brasko.
And it's current state, I have to vote no.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Pulley?
I think we had a good committee, we had good voices, good leadership. I think it was some new viewpoints that we needed, and I, this looks like a step backwards, and we're sort of just back to the same folks doing the same things, and I don't think that's good. So I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Hamburg.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Lebrun?
Aye.
Motion carries, three ahs, two nos. There being no further business at the meeting today, I will adjourn the meeting.